We do have a call, we have a couple of board members that are still stuck in traffic, Ms. Shepherd and Ms. Kim, but they are on their way. So we will stand for the pledge and Mr. Henson, knock it out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Awards and recognitions. That would be you.
I'm sorry, I'm coming.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.
So pre-K is one of our strong points. The federal pre-K expansion grant allowed us to open up the Cambridge Early Learning Center. It's designed to improve early learning programs in a way that can be pushed towards other elementary grades, built on a foundation for academic success. We have received a new federal grant that will allow us to do the same thing for behavior, discipline, and social emotional learning. And we are one of only two schools in the country that received this grant. So that is a huge, huge accomplishment for the Metro Nashville Public Schools. And to talk to us about this program, we will have Dottie Critchlow, Elementary Executive Lead Principal, and Phyllis Phillips, head of our pre-K program.
Good evening, Dr. Joseph, Madam Chair, and members of the school board. We are honored to stand before you to announce the awarding of a federal grant that will support the new Early Learning Center at Cambridge. Unfortunately Dana Ekman, the Director of the Early Learning Centers, is traveling, and Deanne Mari, the Principal, is with Cambridge families at a parent meeting and could not be here tonight. So Dottie Critchlow and I are, we have the privilege of sharing this good news with you. Cambridge Early Learning Center, like Dr. Joseph said, is one of only two schools chosen across the United States to participate in building a national model for social emotional learning in early childhood classrooms. This work could also impact K-12 classrooms across the nation. Cambridge will work with, in partnerships with the Pyramid Equity Project, the Tennessee Department of Education, and the State Office of Early Learning to provide professional development for administrators, teachers, and coaches.
Social emotional learning has always been the foundation of the Early Learning Centers. This grant will enhance our emphasis on positive behavioral supports and the discipline practices that students and families participate in in the Early Learning Centers. Nationwide, there have been conversations around the early learning discipline outcomes. In metro schools, with Oasis have been collaborating to improve the practices to support social emotional learning K-12 through the Passage Initiative for the past two years. This grant will help advance social emotional learning, which will in turn help us come up with the higher academic achievement that we need for our students. The grant will also provide professional development so that our educators will be better equipped to overcome their explicit biases. The goal at Cambridge is to focus on best practices in social emotional learning that can be shared throughout our district and other pre-K programs, and in turn will be replicated across the United States. So we're very excited to share this information with you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Sure. Ms. Pierce, can you read the consent, the gentleman, please?
We have the recommended approval of request number one for purchase of new gymnasium bleachers at Overton High School, Intercall LLC. Recommended approval of request number one for large scope projects at various schools, New Cambridge Area Elementary School, Southland Constructors, Inc. Awarding of purchases and contracts, Family and Children's Services, Gallup, Inc., Horton Group, Inc., Imagine Learning, Inc., Pencil Foundation, Premier Protective Services. Approval of textbook for medical Spanish course, Introduction to the Art of Medical Interpretation, Third Edition, and a compulsory attendance waiver.
You've heard, there's been a motion and a...
Do I need to read number two?
No, that's separate. You've heard of a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda as read?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two, so we have for 212 years moved forward with Dr. Brandon representing the board, being our board member, that we send to the meetings of the Metro Board of Parks and Recreation. And we have been, had a little hand slap, that we are in violation because the board has to elect the representative, it is not an appointment by the board chair. So I would like to make a motion that we elect Dr. Brandon to be our board representative on Metro Board of Parks and Recreation.
All second.
And we have a second, any discussion? All in favor of Dr. Brandon representing the board with Metro Parks?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Carry on. And now we move on to director's reports.
Thank you once again. At the last board meeting, we updated you on the start of schools, and we talked about the many successes we had, and we also talked about some of the shortcomings that we had. So given that some of the issues were not yet resolved, we wanted to update you on those actions today. Overall, the hard work of our central office team and the patience that our parents, our principals, and our teachers, you know, had led to successful resolutions of our issues. And I'm going to bring up Mr. Chris Henson and Dr. Sito Narcisse to update us on what's happening in our schools.
Thank you. Good evening. Regarding transportation, I'll start there. Many, many of our issues have been resolved, particularly as it relates to the beginning of last week, the systemic issues that we experienced the first week or so of school. Really want to express my appreciation to our bus drivers and to the transportation staff for all of their hard work. Everyone has worked very hard, we appreciate the patience of our parents as well. We still have individual issues that we are dealing with and addressing on a case-by-case basis, and anytime you have over 650 buses out on the road two times a day, there will be instances and issues that will come up. The vast majority of our buses are arriving within 10 minutes of bell times. We do have some buses that might be arriving a little early, and so we're continuing to adjust routes and balance loads as the ridership begins to settle. Lessons learned, we've already begun to plan for next year for start of school. We have begun meetings and will continue those meetings. Some of the items that we are concentrating on now relate particularly to our exceptional education routing. The process that we currently have is inefficient. It involves multiple systems, from the Exceptional Education EZIEP system, to the HelpStar ticket, to the new technology, Tyler Technology Bus Routing Software. And so we are working with the Exceptional Education Department and the Transportation Department to improve that process. The window of time that we allocated for routing of school buses was too narrow, we need to begin that process earlier. And then we want to make sure that we have staff in our family information center from the transportation area as well as from the enrollment, student enrollment area, so that problems can be dealt with much quicker, and also help out the family information center. As we know, at the beginning of the year, it's very, very busy as far as volume. Regarding enrollment and Infinite Campus, enrollment backlogs have been greatly reduced and in many cases totally eliminated. One good thing about this transition to a new student information system is we will have clean data, we'll have good data, which we have not always had in the old system, both either with the Pearson system or with the old Edulog routing system. And so we are, we have a very high emphasis on making sure that our data will be clean and good, particularly as it relates to emergency information for students. That has been a problem that we've experienced in the past, is being able to contact parents and guardians when emergencies might occur at a school. So data cleanup and verification still in process, the training for Infinite Campus continues, there's multiple ways training is being offered, from online to face-to-face to actual trainers located out in every school. Roles and access rights as it relates to student privacy are still being clarified, making sure that only those that actually need access to student information are being given that access. Guidance for teachers and parents still in progress. And the goal of opening our new family portal is mid-October. One point that I want to make sure to make is that families, parents and families have access, can have access to student data currently through the student portal. And so if parents and families want to utilize the student login information, they can access student information through the student portal. But the family portal is much more involved, and our hope is that that will be up and running in mid-August, mid-October, excuse me. One lesson learned there is that we did not have enough staffing in our enrollment centers for data entry and for data cleanup, and so we will make sure that we address that for next year. And then regarding our STRIDE, the new STRIDE, MTA Transportation, one thing that I did want to point out, any student that had a STRIDE badge last year, that badge is still good through September 15th. And so the only problems that we've been dealing with would be where students might have lost their badge, misplaced it, or new students into the system. And working very closely with our schools to make sure that every student has a picture because they must have a student picture on the badge to be able to use it for MTA bus transportation. But we did issue those badges a full month earlier than last year. And we're looking at making changes to the process for printing badges, continuing to make those changes. The changes we made this year streamlined and sped up the process, and we did have some schools experience delays related to the enrollment backlogs we experienced as well as just student mobility. And so what we'll try to do better next year is clearly communicate both to our schools as well as to our parents as it relates to the process we're using for the STRIDE, MTA Transportation. Any questions that you might have?
Ms. Pierce?
On the, for the Infinite Campus for the parents, like if they're trying to access a child's grade or when a retake happens, is that what you're saying they can do through the student portal?
That's correct. And of course, it's dependent upon the data being input by the teacher.
Teachers, right.
And the teachers are still learning how to use the new system and how to key that data in and utilize it, but yes, that information would be available through the student login, through the student portal.
Okay, and so are we, are schools communicating that to parents? Do you know that they can't, because I've been hearing that question of how am I supposed to be able to check my child's grade and all that kind of stuff? So are the schools letting the parents know that they can use the student login?
We'll make sure that that's communicated, and then of course, students can communicate directly with teachers via email and other means as well.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions from Mr. Henson?
Thank you. Now we have Dr. Narcisse.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
So just going to give you just a quick update on our work with the executive officers and executive lead principals. As you can imagine, the first couple of weeks has been around logistical operational issues. So us in operations have been one. So we've been working on helping to resolve issues like Infinite Campus and supporting that work, work supporting around transportation, supporting around the different parts of the work, actually the whole entire central office has been working that way. But as you can imagine, executive officers and ELPs touch all the schools, and so we've been trying to make sure that our communication to schools is timely and efficient, and more importantly, to kind of work with principals on being their thought partners to think through various issues. There's been various schools that have had different set of issues, whether it's at the high school level, middle school level, elementary school level. So we've been trying to make sure that that has happened. As we move into the couple of weeks, we're going to start shifting from logistic, logistical focus and operations to more instructional focus. So that's going to start, that's actually starting to shift now as we go into our principals, our A&amp;S principals meeting this week. And in those meetings, we're going to try to start shift, we're going to be shifting how ELPs and executive officers will work around being the principal's thought partners in the work. We've been working a lot around, working around feedback tools and how we're going to calibrate our feedback component. So right now, the executive lead principals and executive officers have been working on creating a tool to talk about how we can provide feedback to principals and help to support them and accelerate whatever their goals are within their schools. So that's been kind of the crux of our work. The other last component is also we've been working around our monthly calendar tool that we presented to you guys in one of our meetings. Every month, there is a set of focus, and so executive officers and executive lead principals, as they go into schools, they're having particular conversations around particular components, around the tool which consists of operational components, instructional components, and there's other set of questions around assessments. So this will be kind of the big focus as we go in from month to month. The other component is also we've been working and having conversations and supporting, learning about the vacancies, which has been big conversation, also our school-based budgeting process, which we've been having a lot of fun around, to make sure we can provide, support schools around filling those vacancies that we have vacant, and also kind of thinking about how we're thinking about our classroom sizes, which we've been working with Mr. Henson and the school-based budgeting team. So that's been most of the crux of the work, and so we are hopeful that we can be more streamlined and specific with our processes. Any questions? Yes?
Thank you, Sito. How many, help me remember, how many ELPs do we have right now?
We have a total of 12.
And they are, how many schools do they supervise?
So we're about one, most of them are 1 to 10 schools, and we have a few that are 1 to 11 schools.
And they don't have other responsibilities in terms of their own school, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So they work specifically with their schools, and their whole function around the work is how they work and become principal's thought partners around thinking through various set of issues. And there's also evaluation component. So we're actually going through a process of training right now to teach them how to balance not only holding schools accountable, but how do you think about how you support them to help them think through their work. All the principals have been principals, but there's a different set of work as you think about development and how you can think about supports and streamlining resources to schools.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, back to me. The first 100-day update, we are roughly one-third of the way through the first 100 days. Thirty-seven days have been so fun, I got to tell you. And we have 63 days remaining until November 18th, which will be the official 100th day. As you can recall, we had five clear goals, and we are well on our way to accomplishing those goals. We had 56 individual action items on that original 100-day plan, addressing five core areas of need. And of those 56 items, we have 18 that are actually complete, 30 in progress, and eight that we have not yet started. And I was just going to go through the five areas and just walk us through just where we are in a little more detail. So remember, area one was regarding governance, and of the 11 action items, we had four that were complete, six that are still in progress, and one not yet started. Board relationships are off to a great start, I hope. No, I know, I know, we're off to a great start. We had our, we had our first retreat, which I think was a huge success, and I'm looking forward to our upcoming retreat here in September. Extremely excited about the work that we're going to engage in with the Panasonic Foundation, and they are going to help us clarify setting our agendas and our calendars, thinking about our mission and our vision as we do the work, and developing my evaluation, the only item that we have not yet started, which will be, again, fun but very important work because as you hold me accountable, we hold the district accountable. So that's great. And if we do get it right, I'm confident that we'll be focused, clear, and committed to how we do business and communicate with one another. So I'm looking, continue to look forward to collaborating with you all and the great work that we have ahead. As we look at area two, which is focused on our district executives and our senior staff, we have four items that have been completed, four that are in progress, and three that were not started. One of the big items was to complete the hiring of my exec staff, and I'm extremely excited that last week we hired a chief of staff, Dr. Jana Carlisle. She'll be coming in on September 12th, and you know, when I thought about, you know, we had over 50 some odd people apply, and about 36 qualified candidates, we narrowed it down to five people to interview, both from, you know, within Tennessee and abroad. And what made Dr. Carlisle a standout was just her breadth of experience. She has experiences working with communications offices and research offices, working at the state level, the national level, you know, grant writing. And you know, the chief of staff, one of the most important things you need is a, you know, someone who's a thought partner who can represent you and push you with the work and push your thinking. And Dr. Carlisle will be able to do so, so we're very excited. And she has spent the past 25 years really focused on equity and excellence as we do this work, and as we have continued to talk about the fact that we are one of the largest, one of the most diverse, one of the most complex school districts in the country, you really want somebody who's been battle-tested in those areas, and she's going to bring that experience to us. She's going to help us drive our overall strategy by bridging the gap between what was done before I got here and what must be done as we think about how we move this district forward. And area three, which was on student achievement, we had 10 action items, nine of those are in progress, and we have one that's not started. Dr. Felder and Dr. Narcisse are helping to drive these analyses. And as they said, our central office support structure is shifting out of the opening-of-schools mode into our instructional mode, and that's really important now because our central purpose is to ensure that all students are learning at optimal levels. So we've got to get out of the, how are the buses coming, to what's happening instructionally. So we are moving there very quickly. So, let's see here. These will progress as the school year goes on, and we have ongoing observations and conversations with school staff. So I think at the first meeting, we showed you that we have structured conversations, and all the work that we're doing is, I mean, it's, process promotes excellence. Now, we are strong believers in that, so you'll see us working from consistent structures and frameworks, and we believe in a no-surprise this type of orientation to the work. People, yes, we have high expectations, but we should be supporting you to achieve those high expectations, and that's our focus. As we look into area four, which was community and public relations, we had 10 action items, six are completed, and four are in progress. I've been making my rounds around visiting the community and a number of business leaders and a lot of the philanthropic community. I've met with dozens of members of the media. You might have seen a few interviews with me recently, right? Thank you for all you work over there, Mr. Gonzalez. You know, I've been in, I've been in schools often, we have time in my schedule where we just make sure we're out in schools and we're doing that work. And the listen and learn sessions were pretty successful, and we have, you've seen the data reports that I've shared that have talked about lots of things that people have seen, heard, and felt. And Dr. Changus and his team are doing the qualitative analysis of those reports right now. And when Dr. Carlisle comes on board, she will help drive these areas forward as we think about what reset has said we needed to do, thinking about the listen and learns and all of that feedback. We'll compile all of that and combine it with the transition work that's happening, and that'll give us a basis for the conversations that we'll have together as we move into November and December, thinking about the frame of a strategic plan. And area five, operations and finance, we had four items that are completed, seven in progress, and three that have not yet been started. The finance pieces are, the finance piece of this are the biggest, and they're still ongoing. The operation pieces also are ongoing, but we learned a lot about them from the start of school. So in general, the three big takeaways here on these first 37 days are, we need to make sure that our teachers are teaching to the standards. Again, we have extremely high standards within this state, and we've got to make sure now as we're moving forward that teachers understand what those standards are, and they're getting the supports that they need to execute on those standards. Putting a plan together to make professional development the top priority is something that we must do. You know, we are, I'm very excited that we are a part of the learning forward consortia here. They have 20 of the largest school districts in the country are coming together to really look at how do we make professional development coherent and effective within the district? So we will begin thinking about that and having a long-term thoughtful plan about the execution of professional development within the district. They'll be looking at best practices around the nation and how do we scale it? And our focus will be on coherence and literacy. And when we talk about coherence, we're really talking about how does everything align from grade to grade, from classroom to classroom? You know, variance is what causes problems, you know? Variance is the enemy of excellence, and one of the things we've got to do, and I've talked to you about before, is just really looking at this notion of autonomy and how much autonomy should be given versus how much, how do we minimize the variance in the autonomy between classroom to classroom and school to school? Because there you get into equity issues that we need to make sure that we're constantly, you know, on top of. But again, if someone's doing great, let them continue to do it. If not, we need to give them some support. The second, the second item that has been clear to me in these first 37 days is that we need strong formative assessments. As we look at our assessment program within the district, it's not as strong as we would want it to be. I don't think our assessments that have been created are totally aligned to what the standards are asking of us, and we need to do something about that immediately. So that is, over the next month, we'll be talking about how we make sure we have strong assessments. So I think through the interview process, when we gave that, what do we need to do? One of the things I talked to you about was making sure that we have reading and mathematics assessments that we feel are valid and can give us both how our students are doing against other Tennesseans and how they're doing against the nation. So we need some norm-referenced assessments. So I don't think we have a year to wait for that. So as we move through this next month, we'll be looking and thinking about how we move forward there so we can begin communicating to our parents how their children are doing in both reading and mathematics, and compare it to other students around the nation, as well as how we're looking against one another. We have assessments, but we don't know how good they are. We'll be surveying teachers. So we do have a teacher survey that has been completed. We hope that it will go out on Monday. We plan on sharing it with principals tomorrow. We want to know from teachers what assessments they find are valuable and which ones aren't from their perspective. Teachers won't be shy to tell us their opinion on this, I'm sure, in the testing process, and we'll use that data to... and we'll use that data to help inform how we move forward. We've put together some teacher and principal work groups already, and we'll be doing a series of events for teachers similar to the listen-and-learn sessions. We want to collect more data specifically from our teachers on how things are going instructionally. And the idea is to make changes and assessments now, because again, we don't have a year to wait as we think about this. The teachers need support, and they need more data, important, useful data right now. And we'll have to realign resources to make that happen, so I'll update you on how we go about doing that. But if we're going to tackle instruction, it has to happen now. So Mr. Hinton and I had a great conversation today about plans and things we think we need to do, and we'll be communicating that in the near future. And third, we need to ensure that our non-magnet schools are offering rigor to all of our students. One of our top parent concerns from the listen-and-learn was, what are we doing with rigor in our non-magnet programs? And we will assess the advanced learning opportunities in our neighborhood schools to make sure that students are getting what they need and parents are getting what they want. Dr. Felder is in the process of running those analyses now, and as we're going through schools, that will be a focus as we're looking at how teachers are implementing the curriculum. And we may be looking at items in next year's budget to address this needle. So in conclusion, it's been a pretty intense bit of two months here, twelve and fourteen-hour days, dozens of meetings, hundreds of handshakes. We are almost, we're almost to the halfway point in that first hundred days, and we're doing daily business of the district while also doing the analysis and planning for the future. The transition teams are deep into their work at this time. They will have a report of recommendations to us early this winter, and the community seems to be with us, and they seem to be energized. Our goal is to keep it that way, and we will deliver steps to take immediately in the long term and short term, but our ultimate goal is to make sure our students are successful. That concludes my update.
All right. I'm just going to have to go ahead and let Ms. Berry speak, because she's about to come out of her story. Just excitement. My eyes are just, when we talk about assessments, I get excited.
Right. I heard professional development, I heard assessments, I heard ask teachers, so I just know you're on it.
You pretty much summed it up right there. I'm so glad that we're talking about assessments and that we're not waiting. We're thinking about it now, and I commend you for bringing teachers in to hear their voices. I think it's so important to hear which assessments actually inform instruction, and that's what we want, and that's what teachers want, assessments that will help them to teach their children, maybe in a different way, or teach groups of children differently. So thank you for that. And yes, I'm excited about the professional development, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about that as we enroll that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Pinkston?
Yeah, just one request on behalf of the teachers. If we could, as we're revisiting the assessment strategy, just look for opportunities to reduce testing time overall.
Yes.
I think that would be a welcome development.
Yes, I'll send you a sample of the survey. It's one of the questions we asked, so we asked not only the assessment, but how much time is it taking, so we can have a measure of, you know, about how much time we're spending on that.
Thanks.
Ms. Fogle?
Combining those two questions, I was just going to say, I think it's great that we're looking at which assessments are effective and also at reducing the testing. How quickly might we see a change in the test schedule?
Dr. Felder, do you have any insight on that?
How quickly might we see a change? It's hard to say.
Okay.
I think once we get the data back, that will inform what we do next. So yeah, it's hard to say, but I would anticipate this year that we should see some changes and some upgrades.
Yeah, one of the things we know we're going to do is, we need some reading and math measures that are reliable. That's important. And we also, particularly in our high school content areas, we need some unit assessments that are reliable. And so knowing we're going to need to add those things, we're obsessed with figuring out what can we take off the plate before we add something, because we don't want to add things without clearly saying, here's what you don't have to do.
Ms. Pierce? I'm sorry, were you done, Ms. Fogle?
No, I'm done.
Okay, Ms. Pierce?
So as a teacher survey, part of gathering that input from the teachers, I've had a few asked to kind of make sure they know when your listen-and-learns are for the teachers, and, you know, is there a process for teachers if they want to be involved?
Yes, and I can turn it over to Joe Bass, he can talk to you a little bit about the, what's in the works for teachers. But the survey will go out to all teachers Monday.
So we shared with you last week our proposal for what we're calling teacher voice sessions. This is actually based on something that Dr. Carrasco did in the priority schools, and it is basically going to break down different areas of expertise and different areas of work, so special ed, gifted and advanced academics, elementary middle high, support employees like bus drivers and maintenance, and have individual sessions with each of those groups, where it's just kind of a teachers and employees only, not really a place for principals and supervisors, but the heads of those departments will run those meetings, and we'll support them from communications with logistics, materials, things like that. And basically just doing a kind of a miniature listen-and-learn, where there's open Q and A, but there's also guided questions on the walls, things like, things that Dr. Carrasco asked, or things like, how do you want your principal to spend his or her time? And they would put dots next to the areas they thought were most important, things like that. So the department heads are involved directly and can receive the feedback directly rather than us collecting it and analyzing it, synthesizing it, and then handing it to them. They would get it directly and be able to answer questions themselves as well. So those are planned for probably October. We're going to take September and the last bit of August to plan them and promote them. But in October, we expect to start holding those. What we're looking at preliminarily, not final, is potentially doing the employee meeting, kind of like we did at the principal input sessions, where we did an employee meeting at four-thirty and then a parent meeting at five-thirty or six, something like that. That's tentative. That's what we're looking at right now. We haven't nailed down any locations or anything like that yet, so that's still to be decided. That's what we're aiming for.
Thanks.
Joe, will those be held like the listen-and-learns were, in a cluster basis?
Well, since we're doing ones that are by specialty area instead of geographic area, we'll probably do them mostly in central locations, but we'll make sure to do plenty of promotion and hold them at a time that allows people to have the chance to leave work and then also attend if needed, while also not taking up too much of their evening time. It's a tricky balance there, but we found that four-thirty is generally a good time, but we'll adjust as necessary.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, committee reports, naming of schools, Dr. Brandon?
Yes, my report comes from the naming committee. April 7th, the naming committee met with David Hines in benefits to discuss the naming of the Wellness Center that is presently under construction right across the way. And during that meeting, the committee reviewed some names for the center, and then the recommendation was simply the MNPS Employee Wellness Center.
Wow.
Mr. Hines, because of who would be using the center itself. So Mr. Hines asked that he be given the opportunity to come back to insurance and trust and propose the recommendation. It was accepted on May 19th, and it passed unanimously, and those minutes were approved at our meeting August 15th, and therefore I will bring the proposal for a vote at the first meeting in September.
Thank you very much.
And the name, again, will be the MNPS Employee Wellness Center.
How long was that meeting?
Pardon?
I'm just kidding.
Also, I wanted to just mention the fact that we had a very moving renaming celebration at Bordeaux last Friday. We don't normally rename schools, especially if they are named after someone, but simply because Bordeaux was a part of the community and it didn't have a name as such. It was renamed to the Ivanetta H. Davis Early Learning Center, and it was well-attended.
It really was.
And quite moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so guess what? It's time for announcements. I'm going to start.
PJ Williams is here, and I want to just congratulate TJ and the Maplewood staff for their one-year anniversary of Firestone-Bridgestone.
Yep.
Yes, yay! Last week, they celebrated this milestone with Katuna Lorig, who is a five-time Olympian for Archer. So exciting, thank you TJ. Also, I wanted to refresh our memories that Maplewood High School won five Academies of Nashville awards last year. Dr. Mason was named the Assistant Academy Principal of the Year. They also received an award for the Freshman Academy of the Year throughout all of the high schools. Bridgestone-Firestone won the Business Partner of the Year. TJ won the CTE Academy Teacher of the Year, yay TJ. The Academy of Entrepreneurship and Innovation won the Academy of the Year, so way to go, Maplewood. We are so, yes. I wanted to say, too, that I had the opportunity to tour Old Center Elementary last week, and in almost every center, every classroom, I guess I went in probably fifteen classrooms, and in just about every classroom, kids were reading books, Dr. Felder. Yes. And we saw lots of writing, not only writing within the classroom in different genres, but also writing displayed in the halls. So I want to thank Brenda Steele and the staff at Old Center for that guided tour. Thank you.
First of all, on a not-so-happy note, I would like to offer my sincere condolences for the two McGawick families who lost their sons late last week and over the weekend. I just want them to know that they're collectively in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you to Dr. Joseph, who is the keynote speaker at the Donaldson-Homage Chamber of Commerce luncheon on Thursday, August 11th. The community was very excited to have you there and to experience the closeness of our communities. And a huge thank you to the HIPD Board of Directors for their generous donation of $2,000 to the Hickman PTO. Two weeks ago tonight, that school was struck by lightning, and the four kindergarten classrooms that they had just gotten set up were totally demolished inside. And so the recipients of the $2,000 will be four $500 checks to those four teachers whose classrooms were destroyed by the lightning strike. And in addition to that, Piedmont Gas is going to donate $1,000 for the two pre-K teachers who suffered smoke damage in their classroom. So again, thank you, Dr. Joseph, for being there for this event. It was a phenomenal display of student talent, and they sang their new school song for us, and it was really nice. Thank you for being there.
Thank you. I need just a couple of minutes to announce a new development that was flagged for us by members of our legislative delegation. Last week, the Comptroller of the Treasury, which handles state and local government audits, released an audit showing financial and operational mismanagement of the Achievement School District. That audit generated lots of media coverage, but on the same day, the Comptroller released a separate communiqué, which I'm sitting around the table, that did not generate any attention, but ought to be just as troubling to us. It is a letter that dinged the Board of Directors of Lead Public Schools for inadequate financial oversight. In this letter, the Comptroller's Office outlined deficit or negative fund balances totaling nearly $2.7 million at three lead schools. The letter calls these deficits major issues. I think they're a big red flag. And the letter states that lead board members should take steps to ensure that the schools are being managed and operated in a fiscally responsible manner. So I'd like to ask briefly for three things. First, stewards of taxpayer resources, I think we're obligated to get a report from the lead board, asking why they're presiding over deficit fund balances. Second, I think we need to go ahead and fully implement the Annenberg standards. We need more visibility into what's really happening. And third, let's consider doing our own audits. Without this letter, we might have never known about these problems. So I know Dr. Joseph and his team will be thinking on this, and I'd like to suggest that we resume the conversation in the Governance Committee sometime soon. Thank you.
Okay. Well, tomorrow night at six o'clock at Hillsborough High School Library, Dr. Joseph will be the featured speaker for the Alliance for Green Hills, and that's just to introduce him to our community, and parents are welcome, students are welcome, business leaders and community members, so thank you for doing that. And then on Friday night, Hillsborough High School plays Oakland in Murfreesboro, but it will be nationally televised on ESPN, so that's a reminder. I think kickoff's at seven. And then, since we don't meet for a couple of weeks, on Wednesday, September 7th, at 10 o'clock, J. Timore will have a ribbon cutting for their beautiful new library that's been renovated by Limitless Libraries, and it is gorgeous, so come over there and see that. And then I just want to take a minute to thank Elisa Kim for her service on the board as her last night here. I will miss her greatly, as will the district. So thank you for all you've done. I feel like I've learned a lot from you, and just will miss you.
Ms. Fogle, do you have any announcements?
I do, just a quick, I just wanted to commend the Hillwood High School football team. They have come back from a dismal season a couple of years ago with a new coach, Coach Page, who came last year, and it was his first year at the school, and he led the team to the playoffs, and so they are doing some great work. I think there's some exciting, there's some exciting days ahead for our football team. They are doing a fundraiser right now, and I made a donation. I know they would love to have donations from the community to support their work. And so I was trying to get a quick link, which was a little difficult, but I've posted on my Facebook page, my Amy for school board Facebook page, and also I'm certain that Hillwood would accept donations at the school. But there's a link for donations. Also, I wanted to thank my colleague, Elisa Kim, for her service, and wish her luck as she jaunts off to France, or Google, or wherever she goes next.
So assuming that Ms. Kim would have nothing to say, before she left, I did prepare some comments, and I have strategically placed myself out of camera range, so if I start to snot, you know, it's just not a good look, not a good look. You know, I'm really specific about that, those kinds of things. But it was suggested that we put this under awards and recognitions, which, as you know, comes pretty early in the agenda. So I have to confess to delaying saying farewell to you for as long as possible. Your presence on this board has been one of the bright spots, encouragements, for continuing to serve for me. There is no one else that I know that voices the need to remember the fundamental reason that we were each elected to our positions with the passion and consistency that you have over the four years that you have been here. It is actually mesmerizing to see you go full throttle on providing quality seats for each and every child, to condemn us with the reminder that we serve a highly diverse, highly impoverished population of now more than 88,000 students, and we should never pass on the opportunity to improve the life of even one of these kids. Between your vocabulary, that obviously comes from reading a book a day, and your animation, that I often believe would send you toppling over the front of that table, you were simply for me inspiring. Challenging our central office team to go beyond the surface-level reporting, reminding us that we need to become singularly focused, asking another of my favorite questions, tell me what success in this looks like? What does accountability in this space look like? And for the newest members of MNPS, you should make her apologize. To Drs. Joseph, Narcisse, Felder, Mr. Queen, Mr. Carrasco, Dr. Gonzalez, and our newest member, Dr. Carlisle, you're going to miss a treat. Ms. Kim actually commented in our first retreat that if she had known we would have a Dr. Joseph and the team he was compiling, she may have reconsidered her decision not to run. Like the team that has been compiled to lead this district, she is brilliant, a critical thinker, driven by the inequities that she has witnessed in public education as a teacher, an English teacher at my former high school in New Orleans, making her one of only three, to my knowledge, seating board members that have classroom experience. The depth of understanding that you demonstrate for the issues we face helps to ensure that we, at a minimum, highlight the opportunities for improvement, but definitely showcase what we, as a board member, should be focused on when we gather at this table. Mary Pierce wrote in her latest newsletter, hats off to District Five School Board Rep. Elisa Kim. For four years of service to MNPS students, never one for political gain or self-promotion, Elisa was forever asking insightful questions that were focused on kids and on point with the true role of the board, always positive and always learning. I can only aspire to read a book a day, recite poetry, or be as committed to yoga as Elisa. I am privileged to call her a dear friend, and I join her in that sentiment. And we look forward to seeing how you continue to share your talents in your next venture. The emotion that I'm struggling to contain is not simply because your talent and contribution to creating diversity of thought on our board will no longer be available to us, but I also remember the not-so-pleasant times that you have had with us. Your time here has been a mixed bag of experiences, to say the least. How anyone could ever question your commitment to public education, to ensuring equity and inclusiveness to our diverse student population, I will never understand. I'm reminded of a quote by John Steinbeck, who says, "I am impelled," not compelled, but impelled, "to squeak, not to squeak like a grateful and apologetic mouse, but to roar like a lion out of pride in my profession." Be well, Ms. Kim, be blessed, be you, and keep roaring. And if you will please do me the honor of closing out this board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry. Truly, thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you to all of you.
For four years.
And I will plan to roar in the future, just so you know it. I just wish you all a lot of luck and success in the next four years, or however long you all are on the board. For 86,000 reasons, I wish you lots of success and lots of joy and open ears and hearts for our kids. So, with that...
We have an award for you.
The meeting is concluded.
I forgot, I got all caught up. So, if you would join me, we could have a picture. She has one of my favorite copies. I'll stand in the bathroom.